You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 3 meeting for the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, September 3, 2025. If everyone would stand for the pledge allegiance, and Roger, would you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Road call.
President Connie Graham Marosa.
Present.
Vice Presidents Steve Hallifield.
Present.
And Member Joseph Haney.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
I would like to make an amendment to the agenda. Would like to remove 11C on the opioid settlement. That is handled through the state, so we don't need to discuss it. And I would like to add 10B under Old Business. Eric Gibson from Hightower will be here to explain the dental and vision plan and the Franciscan healthcare.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of August 20, 2025 minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consideration of claims.
We have payroll for the period ending 8/22/2025, $1,486,719.49.
Make a motion. Will you approve the payroll as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have operating expense claims totaling $2,674,442.17.
Motion to approve claims as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, public comment. This is the time when we ask everyone who wants to come up and speak about anything that we have on the agenda to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lee Morris from 424 Upper Lake Shore Drive here in LaPorte, and I'd like to speak to you about the stained glass project from the courthouse windows. I think we have some developments that will perhaps make this a bit easier for the commissioners to consider. Historic LaPorte Preservation has indicated they'd like to partner with the county to help make this happen. And we believe that we can put together the funding necessary to do that initial inventory and evaluation of the windows, so that this is not a burden on the county. That will give us the information we need to know whether there's really work that needs to be done, what it's going to cost, and what the priority ought to be. There are at least three different firms that have indicated interest in doing that inventory, and we'd like to work with the commissioners and those firms to get to a final proposal and the funding of it, so that that's not a burden. Then the council, I believe, has indicated a support for, once this inventory is done, and we know what it needs to be done to put the windows in proper condition, a 10-year plan for putting the windows up into proper condition. So I'm hoping that will enable the commissioners to give more consideration to allowing us to move ahead, partnership between the county and Historic LaPorte Preservation, and the least burden we can possibly create for the county to have to put funding into this. So thank you very much for your consideration. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Roger Galloway. I live at 608 Tecumseh Street in LaPorte, and I'm the adjutant for the VFW Post 1130 on McLemone Road. We like to keep the National Guard Armory here. I know I've talked to everybody. You never know. We had snowstorms, because I'm so old, I remember 67 and 78, when you can actually walk from the drifts and walk on your roof. They're good to have for standby for anything like that, or tornado, you don't know, or even civil unrest, the way this country's going. So I beg you all to make a deal with the city and get it done.
Thank you.
And if I leave early, sorry, but I have another meeting since we're done here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Criminalize returns to the scene of the crime, the ALICE told me so. It's nice to be back again, and the first time I had the honor of addressing the Commission. I just see on your agenda today you're going to be discussing the armory and some acquisition property out there. I'll keep my comments short, but I want to say how fully supportive I am, and I think you'll see the rest of the veterans are here as well. A little bit of a story about the Indiana National Guard. I was very fortunate to serve 10 years in the Indiana State Senate, and my full 10-year tour, I was the ranking member in the Veterans Affairs Committee. And then during that time, under Senator Tom Weiss and I, we served and worked with a general, Martin Umbarger, who was the head of the Indiana National Guard, one-star general, brigadier general, as they refer to. He's such an approachable and such a receptive man to work with. Senator Weiss came to me and asked me if I was co-author of a resolution getting General Umbarger his second star. And I did, and we got him his second star, and he retired as a major general in the Indiana National Guard. And I've never forgotten that, and it's kept my ties with the National Guard and my support for them in depth. I want to thank you so much for your bringing this before the public today and addressing this issue. The Indiana National Guard has been so proud, there's 64 installations in the state of Indiana, over 14,000 members, served proudly. I think this is going to be a big issue of support. We want to keep that right here in LaPorte County. We want to do everything we can to show our support, and I thank you for the opportunity of addressing it today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Dermody, 1658 South Willow Bend Drive, Mayor of the City of LaPorte. I just want to take a moment and say thank you to each of you for your commitment to veterans, commitment to the National Guard. Without the three of you together of support, this would not have happened, and we would not be here today. And I think the communities, our county, our cities, can all thank each of you for making sure that the National Guard's going to be here for years to come with their investment. So our team is here to answer any questions regarding water, sewer, but most importantly, as you can see with the support that you have here today, the main part is to say thank you. This is what government should be doing, and it'll pay off dividends in our future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Tom.
Good morning. Drew Buchanan, 2108 Woodlawn Drive, LaPorte. I sit on the City Council for LaPorte. I'm still considered the freshman on the City Council, but I've enjoyed interacting with each of you and appreciate your support and consideration for the armory. And it is echoing what others said, it's very important that they're part of our community and shows good working relationships if we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mark Schreiber, 1404 Illinois Avenue here in LaPorte. I am the commander of the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 83 here in LaPorte. We are a veteran support organization, and again, I would just like to reiterate what's already been said, that we, as a veteran support organization, 100% support having the armory here in LaPorte and any improvements in any way that we can make it viable for future generations to have the guard here. So we support our veterans, and we appreciate all of your consideration on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Rosenbaum. I am a, well, dual-purpose person in being here today. I am the president of the Ladies Auxiliary at the American Legion Post 83 here in LaPorte. I'm also the standing adjutant for our post as well, and I believe I can speak on behalf of a good majority of our veterans, who some of which are here today with us in support of this material today. I believe that we are very thankful for all that you guys do for our community, for our veterans, and our veterans are so important to us and so important to the future of this city, that we are very grateful in the passing of this information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Walter Waywalk, 4297 North Highway 35. I am a United States Army veteran. I am a member of Post 451 in Michigan City and American Legion Rider Post 83 here in LaPorte. Came to show support for the water and sewage, and appreciate what you guys are considering doing, and as the old saying goes, let's get her done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Before we proceed, I'd like, because we just have a room full of you, everyone who has served in any of the military branches, please stand up. I think on behalf of the Commission and everybody that works for the county, we really do appreciate your service. It is because of fine gentlemen like you, we have the right to do the things that we do today, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. So moving on, we're going to close public comment, department head comment.
Well, that's a tough act to follow now, isn't it? Matt Ridden, Office of Economic Development, come before the Commissioners today to discuss briefly, there's a property owned by the county on A Street, and just to let the Commissioners know, our office has been reviewing that from a broker and brokerage standpoint, analyzing rents, pricing, comps in the city of Michigan City regarding that property. So we'll be back with some recommendations regarding that property, but a couple of things that are obvious. One, if you're using the structure, building a new structure is probably not, it's going to cost you a little bit of money. Two, the full use of that structure is, you know, you have some spaces that could be available for rent, depending on the condition of the building. So you have to make sure the building is safe and secure and usable for the purposes of lease, that's 9,000 feet. You know, this is an odd parcel, but it's neighborhood retail next to 250,000 square feet of retail shopping center. So it's a tough piece to get the right type of tenancy. The other part is that the city of Michigan City has procured over the years several parcels of property similar to this, knocked it down, and has been collecting properties for the purposes of doing redevelopment process. With the advent of double tracking and the discussions regarding SOLA and proximity and view shed of this property, if those things occur, it likely increases the value potential significantly for that location. You legitimately would have a view of Lake Michigan and access to that. So there's a lot of people in and around the city of Michigan City that buy property, and these are distressed properties, and they're buying it out of bargain. I don't think you'd have a problem doing that if that was the idea, offload it. As the Commissioners are aware, you'd have to get to appraisals for the property, and you have a limited process to be able to dispose of that following the statute. So our group will continue to do the research on this and come back with some ideas about this, but you know, if you're utilizing the building, you probably ought to hang on to it for the purposes that it is. I think the ultimate goal would be to figure out how to cover your cost, which is the electric bill and so on, and maybe you do that with some tenancy. But I don't think anybody's tried that. Frankly, I don't know the total full usage and scope of what the county uses it for. I know at one time it was pretty well-used, and now it is a home for the election and the voting machines, and has to be a secure facility. So with that in mind, I just ask the Commissioners to be a little patient. We're going to come back with some ideas about what can happen and what might be best. That will include some level of review and analysis of what is, is it usable today? What would it cost to make it sustainable? And should you just, you know, put it on the market? So that's the report. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? So we'll move on to our requests. Consider petition for voluntary annexation of county-owned property to the City of LaPorte for utilities to the Indiana National Guard Armory.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Nicholas Otis, I'm the city attorney for the city of LaPorte. Obviously, we've met with each of you individually about this project, and I'm just here kind of to explain the process. We have James Mahern here as well, from the Indiana National Guard, to explain the project specifically. In 2016, the City of LaPorte City Council passed an ordinance, very similar to many communities in the state, that basically said, if you're not in the city and you want city utilities going forward, you need to either be annexed or sign an annexation waiver. I became the city attorney in 2017, and the council's consistently taken that position on any properties outside city limits. And so you've seen probably, if you've paid attention to the news, quite a few annexations over the last nine years since 2016 because of that. Today, before you, is a petition for voluntary annexation for a non-residential utility project for the Indiana National Guard. The Indiana National Guard building on Highway 2, many people think it's in the city, but it's actually not, it's just outside the city limits. The most efficient way to get them annexed into the city is to annex, what we're proposing to annex, a portion of the LaPorte County Fairgrounds property. And this would be, and I say fairgrounds, this is the property actually, east of the fairgrounds on Ziegler Road. So it's east of Ziegler, north of Highway 2, and actually, we've taken, the county working with you guys, the city worked with a surveyor to annex or to separate parcels to get kind of the east end of the Ziegler Road parcel to get us to that annexation for the, to get us to the National Guard property. There's a significant investment by the National Guard that will include significant utility upgrades to that area. Our utility team that's here today has worked with people on the county side to figure out how best to position future, potential future development for that parcel on the east side of Ziegler Road. I know there's been some significant tree removal on that side, and for whatever future plans, this project will incorporate that for whatever you guys intend to do in the future. So before you, as a petition for voluntary annexation, it's kind of the first step in the annexation process. If that is approved today, this, along with two other, a small parcel actually owned by the city of LaPorte that's not in the city, and the National Guard parcel, will all be on the City Council meeting agenda for September 16. And that's the, that's just simply the filing of the petitions with the council. At the following day, then the city will file a notice of public hearing that would be published in the newspaper. And October 20 would be the public hearing on the annexation petition. Most likely, the fiscal plan will be presented at that meeting as well. That's required by statute. The fiscal plan is prepared simply to show any potential future costs associated with this that will be borne on the taxpayers. And then the final public meeting will be November 3, if everything stays on the timeline, and it will become official on December 5. The only thing that needs to be done on your end would be to approve this petition for voluntary annexation. So I'm happy to answer any questions, just kind of on the process, and then if you guys so choose, I think you should hear from Mr. Mahern and the plans that the state has for this project.
I have a couple of questions. We discussed, when you met with us, about the parking lot where we cleared there in the fairground.
Yeah.
I'm on the FMEC board, so we understand that you were going to run a tap for water and sewer through that for us.
That's correct, to the property lot. Correct. Yep. Yeah, when you have the, and you're talking to the lawyer, not the engineers, but when you have the earth opened up, you're going to plan for that, right? So we're going to, and obviously, you don't want to do too much if you don't know exactly what your future plans are for it, but that is the...
But if you just bring us, we can tap into it later.
Yep.
So, because it has the potential for possible campgrounds later on.
Correct. It's a big parcel.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Any other questions for me? If not, I'd like to turn it over to James Mahern from the Indiana National Guard Joint Force Headquarters in Indianapolis.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Jim Mahern, as mentioned, from Indianapolis, the Adjutant General's Office. I'm the Director of State Facilities for the organization, have been for the last 10 years. First of all, I want to take the time to thank each one of you, because you took time from your busy schedules to meet with us last month, to go over the details, to have a better understanding of what the project entails for the National Guard. But I'd like to go over some of that information again, so everybody knows and understands the impact of that project, if you're okay with that.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So first of all, this project is to modernize the LaPorte Armory, which means that we will install female latrines, we will modernize our training technologies and our weapons storage capability. The project is not possible to happen without the utility investment. Due to modern fire standards and modern drinking water standards, that's why we're asking for the utilities to be installed from the city of LaPorte. The project, the dual-project utilities and modernization of the armory is about $11 million. The project will involve new space added to the armory on the front along Highway 2, so the building will look brand-new, and then we will completely restore the inside of the armory as well. I have some information that I'm going to leave for the public, maybe, if that's okay, just it's a flyer with what representations of what the front of the armory may look like, and kind of walk through all of the details of the project in case there are questions. Again, this project wouldn't be possible without the annexation, obviously, your time and effort, as well as the city of LaPorte's time and effort. And I do want to thank both the mayor and his team, and you for considering this annexation. Pending any questions, that's all I have to present.
I want to make sure we keep that base here. 1978, I don't remember 67, Roger, I was a little child then, but I remember 78, and while Mayor Dermody was in school in the city playing hopscotch inside classrooms, we missed 11 days of school that year. If it had not been for the bulldozers at that base, our roads would have never got plowed out. So I want to make sure you guys stay here in case you ever have a future like that.
Yes, sir. I failed to mention that when the National Guard makes this sizable of investment, it does mean that we will be in that community for foreseeable future. There are some federal regulations that require us to stay in that community for up to 25 years unless the state can and the local government can buy back out of that investment. So it does mean that we will be in LaPorte for the foreseeable future.
Mr. Mahern, I want to thank you for your time and diligence coming up here and meeting with all of us, and then coming up here again today. I'd also just like to point out that it wasn't just extending the water and sewer that the state really wanted, they also wanted, they specifically, you guys wanted to be annexed into the city of LaPorte to receive that 15% discount off your utility bills as well. That was part of the financial incentive you guys were considering, and that's one of the reasons, kind of how we got here today.
Yes, sir. When we started planning this project over five years ago, when we sat out to look at the conditions, we discovered that we were outside of the city. Investigating that with the city, they did tell us of the discount for being annexed into the city, and again, that we are looking for, again, we're a taxpayer-supported entity, and we want to make sure that we're reducing the cost as much as we can, and that is, that is one of the reasons, one of the factors that we considered in extending the utilities and annexing into the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahern, I do want something for the public record. If you can give us an idea of the capital contribution into the, into the project.
Yeah, so the project is, the armory project is over $9 million. The sewer utility will be over $2 million. That will come from, the utilities is solely supported by the state of Indiana, based on the way the National Guard requires us to, when I say us, the National Guard is not, the federal government is not allowed to purchase property or extend utilities. The state is the one that is on the hook, or the local government is on the hook to do that. In this case, the state came to the table and brought that utility money to extend those utilities to the armory. The armory project is a blend of state money and federal money for that $9 million.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we accept this annexation proposal.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just for the public's edification here, this section of land that Mr. Otis had talked about is a small sliver on the very kind of northeastern, if you will, portion of Ziegler Road. It's a small strip just to connect city property to the annex. So it's, when we mentioned fairgrounds, it's that tiny, it's a small diagonal sliver that's cut on the very northeast portion of Ziegler. It doesn't really affect any of the fairgrounds land itself, other than that small section of most of Wichita Swamp, and then, you know, I don't know, 20 or 30 feet of actual dry land for that utility corridor that would go behind it. So that's why it's referenced as a utility annex. Thank you.
By statute, you have to have contiguity, and it's very specific how much land you have to have to get an annexation done. So we did it in working with you guys to kind of minimize any concerns on your end, took the least amount necessary to comply with the state statute on annexation. So, and again, people hear annexation and have certain feelings about it. It doesn't change the ownership, it doesn't change anything in that capacity. And the other unique thing, I certainly talked with Mr. DiMartino about this, the fairgrounds parcel is, has one parcel ID, but it's across, it's across Ziegler, it's south of 2, it's kind of unique, and I don't have an explanation for that, but we appreciate you guys working with us and our surveying team to get that done as quickly as possible, so that they can get this out, out to bid, so, and get the project going. I think you'll see things happening pretty quickly after this, once this gets done.
Very quickly.
I'd also like to add, I think it's a win-win for the city and the county both. The fairgrounds is going to benefit with the sewer and water annexation, or the lines, and we're going to keep the National Guard, and the city's going to get a new user for their sewers.
Like you guys, I grew up here and driven by that place thousands of times in my life, I didn't realize how many people come, when they're on call or on duty, they stay in our hotels, because they don't stay on site, they eat at our restaurants. It is a benefit to both the city and the county. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we'll give you guys a few minutes, if anyone would like to leave at this point.
Where are you going, mayor?
We thank you all for coming in and supporting the project, and...
No problem. Thank you.
That's perfect. They have a...
Okay.
Roger Galloway. What's going on, Roger? Yes. You're sitting off. It's going to be a...
We've got Bodie's here. I made a copy of it, but this is who I mentioned about all the stained glass windows and stuff that was done.
This is for me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll continue on. Thank you so much. So moving on, Old Business, consider second discussion on the LaPorte County courthouse stained glass windows, because the council kicked it back up to us.
So just going through the records, these windows were redone in 2006 during, when Zylkowski did the renovation for the courthouse. Bavard Industries, Bavard Studios from Iowa did the work. I reached out to them, I've not heard back from them, they're supposed to give us a copy of the contract. I've also spoke, I think Mr. Haney's also spoke with Bodie Studios here from LaPorte, and he is nationwide plus worldwide. I mean, he, in 2005 and '06, he offered his services free of charge to go through those windows and make recommendations, and I think he's willing to do that again.
He's here today, actually. I want to thank you for your time.
So I mean, we've reached out, because 19 years, I can't believe if those windows have lasted this long, that they need a major renovation, so, and if he's willing to provide services to help the county, like Mr. Morris has brought up the fact that People for Preservation are willing to kick money into, so it won't cost the taxpayers anything, I think we need to look at this, and just like suspiciously... Bavard Industries, Bavard Studios from Iowa did the work. I reached out to them, I've not heard back from them, they're supposed to give us a copy of the contract. I've also spoke, I think Mr. Haney's also spoke with Bodie Studios here from Laporte, and he is nationwide plus worldwide, I mean, he, in 2005 and '06, he offered his services free of charge to go through those windows and make recommendations, and I think, is he willing to do that again?
He's here today, actually, I want to thank you for your time.
So, I mean, we've reached out, because 19 years, I can't believe if those windows have lasted this long, that they need a major renovation, so, and if he's willing to provide services to help the county, like Mr. Morris has brought up the fact that People for Preservation are willing to kick money into, so it won't cost the taxpayers anything, I think we need to look at this, and just like, especially if it's not going to cost us any money.
I've reached out as well to Hersig and Associates, who were the architecture design firm initially, I haven't heard back from them yet either. Trying to go through them to find the scope as well, because they would have had it at the time, whether they still have it 19 years later, I'm not sure, I still haven't heard back from them. It's, yeah, so from 2006, there probably should be some sort of, at least some sort of warranty. I know the people who did the frames are no longer in business, Harmon Glass, they're no longer around, but it would be nice to see, we've got some great input so far. And if it's all right with you, Madam President, Mr. Bodie, would you like to, would you like to say anything? And I appreciate your time the other day, you took me through your studio, very impressive.
Yeah, pretty much is echoing what you say, preservation, conservation, stained glass windows, once they do that work, and plus that they have protective glazing in front of them, really, we shouldn't be having this conversation, they should be sitting there for hundreds of years, you know, left untouched, unless there's some sort of vandalism or something like that, so I'd be happy to take a look at the windows at no cost, and talk to the ex-mayor, he's got two proposals from other companies, one I'm familiar with, I don't think much of them, but I'm familiar with them, and I don't mind critiquing it and excluding myself from any future work, if, you know, if that seems appropriate, which I think it does. And we, again, we're a national company, international company, we've been in business since 1684 in Italy, and 1864 in this country, we've done St. Patrick's Cathedral in Manhattan, the Cultural Center in Chicago, Amazon headquarters, and Newark, those types of things, and a little small window for somebody in Michigan City in their bathroom, so we go from one end to the other. So I'd be happy to take a look at them, and with Jenny Elsner, a lot of engineering companies bring me in on peer reviews and that sort of thing, too, so I'm accustomed to looking at method and means of doing this type of work.
You offered the same service in 2005 and '06, correct? When they did the renovation?
They put me in as a consultant, and, you know, for that project, and I wrote up specifications for it, but then I precluded myself, you know, from the bidding on it, I don't, I never saw what they ended up as far as the spec, or how they issued it, or importantly, like, you're going back, and we talked about earlier, too, the warranty that was required. And I know Bavard has been sold since then, so I don't know if that carries over to the new company, but certainly you would, and I did remember that they got awarded it, but again, I don't know what that warranty was, but that would be one thing I would want to look into right away, you know, on that, and I think that architect of records that you mentioned probably would have those specifications with the RFI, RFP rather, for that project.
So I would make a motion, I'll step down as president, make a motion that we tabled this issue to the next meeting, and we assign Commissioner Hollifield into continuing to work with the different vendors, and looking at all the paperwork to kind of figure out where we're at. I mean, we definitely know that there was work done 19 years ago on these windows, and before we start making a commitment to anyone else, that we allow Commissioner Hollifield to look at this a little bit better. That would be my motion.
I would be happy to make that motion, but starting the, starting a tradition of having the president make motions, when there's a full board here, is something that hasn't been done, at least for the time that I've been here.
There's been other times that I've had to step down, so it's not a first.
Okay, let's just move on, please. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Mr. Haney, are you making that motion?
I would make that motion, sure.
Mr. Hollifield?
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the meantime, since we do have an offer here while you're doing that research, Commissioner Hollifield, I would make a motion, if it's amenable to the board, to let Mr. Bodie, give Mr. Bodie authorization, be able to take a look at the windows, since, you know, he can at least get an evaluation to find out if he goes through and says that everything's okay with where it should be.
Are you making a motion on that?
Yes, I would make a motion to do that.
I spoke with him on the phone on numerous occasions, and he seems well-versed in the knowledge of that courthouse windows and the job itself, and if I'm not mistaken, didn't you actually do some windows to Notre Dame Cathedral in Paris?
Consultant.
Consultant on them, so...
Excuse me, I need some clarification.
Okay, sure.
Ms. Grammerosa, were you asking for this matter to be tabled?
Yes, I did, until we could get further information on that. He picked up my motion, and now he's added to the motion.
Yeah, procedurally.
Yeah, okay, so it was, I didn't hear the table, okay.
So it's tabled?
It's tabled.
So we can't discuss anything else?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you going to set a time, just when you, ever you remove it off the table, at a later date?
And this way, this will give him the ability to go ahead and contact whoever he has to contact.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on. New, under 10B, we have Eric Gibson to discuss the health clinic.
Yes, Dental Vision and Clinic. You guys have a copy of this already?
Yes, I do. Does everyone else have the copies?
Yes. Fantastic. All right, well, thank you all for your time this morning. Topic of discussion is the dental vision, then of course, the clinic. So, the dental insurance is currently with Equitable, excuse me, due to claims, they came in with a 24% increase. Vision is with IMED, and is currently flat. We did go to 14 different markets and solicited those quotes for you. On the comparison that you guys were looking at, we've only included the most competitive. So the offer that you're actually looking at is keeping the dental with Equitable, they're willing to come down to a 13% renewal offer. If you add Vision, which their vision carrier is VSP, by doing that, you can actually increase the benefit allowance on the Vision to $150 versus $120, and they're also going to match the rates on the Vision. So by bundling that together, they are going to give you a little bit of a break on the dental, and you're going to be able to increase the benefits on Vision for flat. That would be my recommendation.
So we would keep, we would take Equitable for the dental?
Correct.
But then also consider using VSP for the I?
So, yeah, so Equitable is also going to hold the Vision, but they are going to be under the VSP plan, yes.
And that gives us a better rate?
Absolutely.
I would make a motion to accept your recommendation, moving to Equitable, and then with the $150 for the Vision.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you. So, on the clinic front, as you know, we've been working with the Franciscans, working out that contract, and our recommendation would be to move forward with the Franciscans. Their model is a little bit different than the current North Shore setup, so it's not the full-service pharmacy that you guys are used to, but also the pricing structure is a little bit different, so rather than paying directly for those drugs, there is, it's a list of about 60 to 70 different drugs that they can actually offer, that is all-inclusive in the monthly fee that they're going to take. So it's not the itemized bill that you guys are used to seeing, it's going to be more of a flat, stable base rate. Obviously, they do primary care, treatment of common ailments, annual exams, x-rays, labs, vaccines, all of those things. They've got numerous locations, one here in Laporte, one in Michigan City, Valpo, Portage, Crown Point, they're all over the state, so that would be my recommendation. I would recommend that transition whenever the termination of North Shore is complete.
Did we not proceed with the termination with North Shore already?
Right, we're on the six-month...
Six-month term, okay.
I don't remember the date that they signed the green card, but the six months is somewhere in December, so you might go a couple of weeks bare, but my recommendation would be that if you're going to go ahead and enter with an agreement with Franciscan, that we started on January 1, and people would just not have a clinic for a few weeks. But I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any contracts or anything.
Okay, I'll make sure you get an updated version of that.
From Franciscan?
Pending contract.
Contracts from Franciscan?
Correct.
I just want to take a look again at notice requirements, and the length of notice, and things like that. And the other thing is, you know, we've had issues with the other provider as to how they're going to go ahead and, you know, the type of services they're going to provide, and we've had some folks who have been not happy with it, so I want to make sure that we can hold their feet to the fire a little bit.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I have a question here on the list of drugs you got here. This is smaller than the list currently for North Shore, but you said they're adding, adding...
Correct.
Are we going to be billed for these, just like we do with North Shore? Or is this going to be...
Those are all included in the...
In the fee, so if someone needs an antibiotic or something, it's going to cost nothing for them or us.
Correct, you'll already be paying for it within that fee structure.
And as I talked to you this morning, the, is it $65?
Yes, $65 is the base rate.
And if we, if less employees per month use that, it'll be dropped down, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so it's that $65 base rate, and then the calculation is based off participation. Typically, what we see municipalities are at the, you know, 20 to 30%, or 30 to 40%. So if you look at the annual spend, we are estimating somewhere around $230,000 to $276,000 versus the current, which is much higher.
The other thing to think about, Commissioners, with this, is that most people are hooked into Franciscan Physicians Network, so it's going to be a smoother transition than hopping from North Shore to either Franciscan, so I think there's going to be a bigger internal, because some of the, some of the rub, or some of the opposition has been, you know, these doctors aren't affiliated with my other doctors. So now they'll all be on the same my chart, they'll all have that same access, and it might be a little smoother and easier for the employees.
Eric, thank you for your work on this, and I know it's been a team effort, we appreciate it. I would make a motion to approve the agreement for the Healthy Access Program Agreement, starting January 1, 2026, pending review of our legal counsel.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, consider update to county's termination policy for employee handbook. Monique Thomas, our Director of Human Resource.
Seems like the podium is a lot closer. Monique Thomas, HR Director. At your pleasure, I would like to make a recommendation to update our termination policy to our current handbook. I believe you all, the attorney has reviewed it as well, and I'm just asking for a recommendation or an approval to add it to our current handbook.
And the only change here is, A, what's bolded?
Yes.
Okay.
I've reviewed it, it's good.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept this?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Consider Lockmueller Group Construction Inspection Contract for Bridge 104, presenting would be Mitch Bishop, our county planner.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The county received eight letters of interest for Bridge 104, that was scored by myself and charity, and we recommend Lockmueller Group. Before you is their contract, this is an 80/20 grant, like most of them. To date, actually, we have 13 bridges that are federally funded, and this is one of the 13. This project in particular will be let for construction the second quarter, no, first quarter, January, I mean, March, geez, of 2026. So this is the next step in the process. We have six months before the letting, and that requires us to procure construction inspection services, we have done that with this. We're okay with the terms, council already gave 20% of the matching funds required, I believe this contract is for $150,000, $180,000, and the federal grant paid 80% of that.
This is the bridge down there, excuse me, south of 6, between the new gravel pit and the old gravel pit, correct?
Yeah, it's on 1,000, south, yeah, south and south, right over Kink.
Okay. Make a motion to accept this?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks. Thanks, Mitch.
Consider integrate Public Safety Commission System Key Agreement for EMA. Good morning, Cody. You'll be presenting.
This is just the same agreement as last year, but the only addition that I'm also a programmer. I think, I didn't see the last agreement, but it's the same MOU template from IPSEC.
Yes, I reviewed it, it's fine, it's the same agreement, we're just adding Cody.
Okay.
Based on his certification or class that he took.
I'd make a motion to accept the updated Integrated Public Safety Commission Key Agreement.
I'll second for discussion, I got a question. I can barely turn a computer on, so what does this do for us?
So, it's for programming public safety radios, so like, updating the firmware, if we get new radios, we can program them to have all the channels that the sheriff's department uses, or the channels that the state uses, that kind of thing.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you for taking the class and passing, and I'm glad that you did it, because I know that that saves taxpayers tons of money.
Yep, thanks.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
And then before we adjourn, I think that there was something that we didn't add to the agenda, we really need to add it under new business, and that's the jail showers above the gas line that we had given approval for, the showers that were directly above the gas line. As they opened up that line, it turns out that the showers right above that are also leaking. So instead of just having two sets of showers leaking, now we have four, we've discovered that there's four sets of showers leaking. So I think we need to have a discussion, because we have only approved to pay for two of them, and now that we have the other two that are leaking just above those showers, it is not conducive to fix the lower ones and not fix the ones above it. There's absolutely no way that we could fix the first set and still have water dripping down, because it's the, the process that they're going to use to fix it would not adhere to, to the concrete, knowing that the concrete is sold. So what would be the pleasure of this board, or do you want...
Also, before the, before the meeting, President Adam Cronkite reached out to me, and we discussed this, he feels there's going to be no issue with the council, that just lumping this all up in one project and get it done, it'll be above the $50,000, but he doesn't see an issue there, because this is an issue we have to take care of, the jail's got to be security issues up there, and it needs to be done, so I think we should just proceed and have it done.
So is that your motion?
Yeah, make that a motion.
Captain Hahn, why don't you come up here, or Sheriff, come up here, just so, if you can...
I'll second for discussion, and did he give indication, the last I'd spoken to, and I saw Council President Cronkite yesterday, we toured with Captain Hahn, that specific cell block itself. The thought was that since money's already appropriated for what is Block 3, that if we change the direction to use Block 3 to Block 7, it's directly above it, if memory serves, if we, then we don't have to necessarily worry right now about appropriation to get the repairs started on 7, without doing 3 right now, because obviously 3 has to be dry.
The way I understood it, he was going to move the $40,000 appropriated already, to do the ones above that you just discovered, and then was going to fix the other ones and roll that in as an additional appropriation later, is the way I understood him.
But well, at this meeting, we should probably go ahead and give the approval to move it up, but then also have a motion where we're going to go back to the council, because we would need to know this by Friday. On Friday, correct, Mr. Auditor? We would have to get that on the agenda for them to...
For appropriation purposes, yes, because we have an earlier meeting than normal due to the AIC conference at the end of the month, so... to the AIC conference at the end of the month, so therefore it moves our timetable up a little bit to get the 10 days' notice, so we need to know that, so we appreciate...
So then, we would approve the second, we would need a two-part motion. One, to proceed moving the money up, so that we can get the two upper showers done right away, and then a second motion...
I think the first part of the motion should be, just that they can, they can start repairing 7 and...
The ones they just found.
Yeah, yeah, and then the second part of the motion would be to approach the council.
So currently, how did you make the motion, I'm sorry?
Made the motion, oh, I gotta remember that.
Roll it all into one.
To, basically, to do the 7 that you need to be done, and then they were going to do the other two that they already appropriated money before, but use that money to do the above ones.
You don't have to worry about the money.
Okay.
I think you just have to worry about...
Just get it done. Let's just get it done.
Well, I mean, so... Let's do this in two motions.
Okay, first motion is to take them and do the 7.
Start the repair above.
Upper floors.
Okay.
S6 and S7.
S6, next 7, okay.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, to repair S6 and X7. All those in favor say aye.
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 And so the second motion should be to approach the council to see about appropriation for the...
3 and 4.
3 and 4, correct.
S2 and S3.
S2 and S3, okay, I make the motion that we approach the council to have that money appropriated for S2 and S3 then.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
So I would just, I would just like to say thank you to the sheriff's department, Captain Han, Sheriff Heeg, as well as especially all your jail staff, and deputies there on the correction side, who are bearing with us as, it's a lot of, it's a lot of added, you know, there's added workload and stuff from moving guys around, doing this extra stuff, and we appreciate all their hard work and diligence.
Thank you, and we appreciate the commitment from the commissioners and getting these issues addressed, and, you know, it's a team effort, and we'll be glad to work as a team to get this finally accomplished. Thank you.
I'd like to, now that we wrapped up, before you adjourn, I'd like to add a couple of things.
We didn't vote, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So you'll get that on the agenda for the council. Thank you.
I would like to add a couple of comments here. Couple weeks ago, my mother fell in her house, she hit her Life Alert bracelet, the hospital summoned me, I went there with my son-in-law, who was an EMT from New Coralisle, we decided she needed to call 911. Sage Kluge, the 911 operator, wonderful lady, she acted, she took care of all the questions, calm, collected, took care of everything that needed to be done, she dispatched first responders from Lincoln Towns, a volunteer fire department, Mike Lazzaro and Kyle Rennsberg, I wanna thank them, and then when the EMTs arrived, Ron Johnson and Jason Albin, they talked to my mother the whole time, all the way through, kept her calm, collected. These people, we don't hear much about unless we need them desperately, and they stepped up that day. Thank you. And also, one other thing, September 10, between 5:30 and 7:30, at Michigan City Chambers, is, I'm hosting another town hall meeting, I'm hoping the public can come, as many electors can, thank you.
So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, and hope to see everybody at Harvest Fest this weekend in Door Village.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.